So we did look at all these different locations within the immediate vicinity of where the engineers needed the site. Now, as far as the other options that have been.
Steve address it would.
Yeah, the. Yeah, Steve can attest to the the locations I were suggested by Mr. Levy, the ones to the north and to the west.
You know, look at page four, the RF deck, if we can get this page brought up. Sorry to make you search. Page four, someone that says area evaluations. It's what? Oh, I'm sorry. That's page four on my end. Page 28. Thank you. Apologies, I forgot it was a combined deck. There you go. Okay, so there were two sites brought up yesterday. I believe Nick forwarded the email to me. If you go up in the northern area of the blue box that runs along the highway and it says the farther north we move, the users to the south of the area, south in Aurora Hondo are not served. So the pen, if I remember the exact placement, it was kind of close to the northwestern side of that little box. It's on the upper side of the picture. That, once again, is too far north. It doesn't cover to the south. There was another site bought up that's just north of where the site that's been appealed. That is a T-Mobile site. The other piece of property was right next to that site. So it didn't make sense that if there's already another site being designed or being built and applied for, to try and build another one right next to it. The other thing is, if we go towards the west, the towers proposed, and we look at the terrain, turn back towards that substation to the west, we lower in ground elevation by 100 feet. So we're going to have to at least build 195-foot tower in order to attempt to provide the same level of service as the proposed tower at 95 feet. So when we get to about 200 feet, that's when we have to start lighting the tower based on FAA requirements. And I think one of the oppositions spoke about not wanting to have lights on the tower for light pollution. And then the other thing to state is, once again, this is a Verizon site as well. So Verizon needs coverage. We've heard from multiple people talking about that. And as well as, I worked in satellite for three years. And I was a base station systems engineer for a geosynchronous orbit satellite called TerraStar One. And I can tell you, just from 35 years' experience in wireless network engineering, everybody's not going to be able to go to satellite. There's not enough spectrum. There's too many users. There's too much going on. There's limitations with satellite. So terrestrial-based carrier networks with towers will be here until Jesus comes back.
Thanks, Steve. I actually have another question for, if you don't mind standing up here with me. Before, I just wanted to respond to some of those comments. So it seems like high ground is needed. You've heard from.
This is asking questions to the other.
Thank you for the clarification. I am not an attorney and I don't know these rules. All right, moving on. The need has been identified by engineers hired by a for-profit company, not by the community. This morning, on my drive in from Hondo, I had a chat with my mom all the way in. That call wasn't dropped until I passed the blinking light heading south where there are more towers. My question for you, Steve, is how am I dropping calls the closer I get to more cellphone coverage or towers?
Okay, so we come into two things. So 35 years ago, when I started in this business, all we could do was talk on the phone. That was it. I remember those days. I loved those days. It was great. These days, it's not so great. So we have a limited amount of bandwidth per user. So as more and more users come onto the network, that creates capacity. So capacity is like throughput. An analogy is like a water pipe. You run a water pipe down the street. One person taps that water pipe, they get 100% capacity. Second person taps it, splits it 50/50. Two more people tap it, 25 to each. So the radio channel is a finite resource. It's a water pipe. Let's use the analogy. The more people that attach to it, the less bandwidth per user happens. The second part of it is because there's more users, the quality level, the quality area of the site shrinks. So the more users on a site, the noisier it is, the less capacity the increased channel for blocks. Think of it like this room. You try to fill this room with 400 people. What happens? Gets really, really loud and the fire chief gets really ticked off because there's too many people in this room. But the noise level increases. I have to talk louder to Beb. Beb has to talk louder to me so I can understand what's going on. The less users, the quieter it is. Quality increases. I don't have to talk as loud. My amplifier doesn't have to work as hard. We can have a conversation. That's what's going on.
Thank you for that clarification, sir. Few more questions. I'm curious, it wasn't, it must have been in your packet. I received it from the planning director when I dropped off my appeal package. There was a diagram of the percentage of people who work from home in Aurora Hondo. And I'm curious if if you have also asked the question of the folks who are working from home or schooling from home, what percentage of those homes have high-speed internet or internet at their house?
Thank you. Yes, I believe I believe you're referring to was a snippet in my presentation from the Planning and Zoning, the Planning Commission hearing, which we did resend to make sure it was included in the record. That was a snippet from a poll that was done as part of the county's new comprehensive plan. There's a, I guess, there was a poll done, a fairly informal poll. But it was just interesting to me, so I included in my presentation that there was, it asked what percentage of, or it asked, you know, where do you work? Well, I work in an office. You know, I work for someone else. I work from home. I work out outside. I can't remember the exact questions. I don't have in front of me. But that's where the source of that. So to answer your question, that wasn't our poll. That was a poll done by the county or the county's consultants during part of your comprehensive plan. It's in the comprehensive plan. So that's where I got that from.
Thank you for that. My next question is actually for the community behind me. If I could get a raise of hands from the community members who have internet at their house. Thank you. My next question has to do with the application that was denied in 2014. My question is, what's changed with the application?
Thank you for the question because that is really the reason we're here. As Steve has indicated to you and to the commissioners, and it's my presentation, just remember the sheer number. Oh, I'm sorry. Let me start again.
Be careful when you touch it. It turns off real quick.
There you go. Thank you for the question. Let me start with what I presented, as you'll recall, Ben, where I indicated that the latest reports are showing in 2024, there were 22 trillion. You're, you, you know what trillion is? That's a million, million. Calls and similar, 24 trillion text messages. Again, million, million. So our use of the phones has exploded. And it's because not only of public safety, as the first responders indicated, your business, all of us, and the convenience on top of that of working from home. And as I mentioned, school from home, which is an incredible benefit to children, has exploded. And it's going to continue to explode. So the mere difference in the, how many years was ago was the one that failed? I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Over the last time since the failure to now, it has continued to explode. Therefore, more and more pressure is on the providers to provide your community, your neighborhood, that critical voice and data service.
Thank you. Maybe I didn't state my question clearly. With regards to the actual application and the tower that you're proposing to build, what has changed between 2014 and now with the structure that you're proposing to build? Not with the use of cell phones and the number of people using.
Is there, is, as part of your packet, talking to the applicant, did you talk about the 2014 application at all?
We were not involved.
You were not involved?
I'm sorry. County attorney, the application packet did not address the 2014. We are applying for a specific use permit under the current code provisions and the current code situations.
The way cross-examination works, you have to ask a question.
I've never been told that I wasn't heard. Anyway. The way cross-examination works is you're allowed to ask questions of anything that was discussed during their case in chief. In other words, any testimony that they gave, you can ask questions with regard to that testimony. If they never talked about the 2014 application, if that's not part of their application, frankly, I haven't looked at 500 pages, I don't know. But if it isn't, if they didn't, then that's outside the scope of the direct examination or of their case in chief. And it's inappropriate to ask questions, cross-examination questions about things they never testified about.
This hasn't been the first time I've been told I'm inappropriate. Thank you. I'll move on. As we've established, I am not an attorney. However, I do believe the burden of proof is on the applicant to argue that this does not break county code. I've given you four examples where it clearly does break county code.
When the. Again, this is, this is, this is not a question. It doesn't sound like a question. But it may be appropriate to allow each sideless summation. And if, I think if you want to indulge this summation, maybe limit the time on each, you could do that unless you're getting to a question.
Exactly.
Okay, well, we'll get to the question.
Need to set the question up so it's fully understood. When the applicant says that, and I quote, "It meets the spirit of the code," that sounds like we almost got there. It doesn't sound like they satisfied the code. My question is, could you please explain to us how you have satisfied codes 4.6.1A and B as well as code 411, colocation and concealment?
Thank you again, Ben. Absolutely. 4.61A, the board's predecessors were present in adding the word "or." They were faced and they recognized that we would have situations where public service representatives come in, testimony comes in, that there is a significant need that overrides the, or to be considered by you all, to override the previous requirement. We have shown voluminous information, both empirical data and verbal confirmation, confirming that the substantial need to your community overrides the concerns regarding the compatibility standard. On the visual impact, I think that the best way, Ben, to explain that is a tower is needed. We were looking for the best way to soften the impact of the tower. There have been situations, in fact, recently, this, the board has approved towers that were camouflaged by being painted brown, sand color. They, we were proposing this, and as recognized by Rudy and staff, this is to fill that "or" as an effort to provide your community with a softening impact of the critical need. Now, the section that you're referring to, colocation, in the submit, submit materials that you, that were presented to the Planning Commission that you have, I'm sure copies Rudy gave you a copy of, and you all have in the binders with the tabs, you will see certified mail letters to every one of the carriers saying, "This tower is available for colocation. Let us know and we will work with you." We have also offered to the county public service connection for their own fire and safety connectivity. How else, what more could we do to provide and comply with the colocation requirements? We followed that section to the point.
Well, I'm sorry you didn't address the final part of section 461A, which is the final "or," which is not have a substantial impact on the immediate neighborhood.
Ben, again, there are words "or." They're not "and." So we met the critical nature. It's an "or," then we produce a substantial effect, and then it's an "or." We still stand on the critical nature as testified by these public service representatives needed for this area, needed by the wireless carriers, map and empirical evidence. So it's a series of "or's." It's not an "and." It was not drafted to tie the hands. It was drafted to have the ability to do like we're doing today, present to the commissioners the facts and show that there is a substantial benefit.
Thank you for that. As we saw, a variety of maps today, many of them disagreeing with one another. I would invite the county commissioners to drive to Aurora Hondo and check service for yourself. And the presentation, we saw a lot of disclaimers on that, those maps, which is challenging. And I guess my question is, is there also a disclaimer on the coverage that is being provided if this tower were to be built?
I think, excuse me. Thanks, Ben. I think Steve's the appropriate person. This is, like he said, he has design networks. He reads those. He advises companies. And he can tell you all the questions you may have about the maps.
Thank you for the question. If you'll forward in that deck to the one that has the propagation modeling, I'll tell you. Keep going, going. Almost there. There. That was 48.
One down.
One down. Oh, thank you, ma'am. Okay, so these maps were generated by a Verizon RF engineer who has knowledge and experience and data from the Verizon network completely. This is RSRP. This is an industry standard way for an engineer to look and propagate an antenna, taking into account terrain, clutter, type of trees, shrubs, buildings, everything, what's going on. I put a dipole up. I put power on it. I put a frequency on it and it propagates. So it gives me every three meters, it gives me for bin size, it tells me what's going on in that area. So the difference between this map and the maps online, maps online are typically operational path loss, which is something totally different than RSRP. This is the standard ATOL propagation plot for RSRP for a digital network utilizing long-term evolution technology. And it is the same piece of software used by AT&amp;T, T-Mobile and Verizon. This is industry standard software and the models have been tuned with drive data within areas.
If you write this down for me. My next question has to do with the original application and some of the photos that were submitted, specifically the photo depicting the location of the Atalaya Asequia as compared to where this cell tower is proposed to be built. We found a mistake with that, as was described by one of the public comments. And I'm wondering if the applicant would like to speak to that.
Ben, I think the best way to address that is to ask you to take a deep-tail look at the NEPA study. It goes into all the aspects, the 106, all of the elements that you've raised, and the locations and the sign-offs that there's no effect. The scenic trail, the SHIPO involvement, all of those are a requirement by a national group that was hired as substantial evidence, not only to the FCC, that has to be approved by the FCC, in fact. You don't get to go to go unless you have a satisfactory NEPA or you go in and work out a memorandum of understanding with the Asequia Society on if there is an issue. We have a clean bill of health. I think the best way to address that versus comparing, was that a good photograph we saw to what we produced, is not as productive as taking the time to review the approvals and the submissions to the NEPA. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I guess the point of that question has to do, and I'm glad you brought up the NEPA report. The, the, the photo that was taken is misleading, indicating that the cell, or the Asequia is not as close to the cell tower as it actually is. So I would argue that that NEPA report is fairly inaccurate because of the misrepresentation that was made with the location of that Asequia. I have two more questions. This question is for you, accounting manager, Hadamiya.
We can't ask. It has to be to them. We can't ask him either. It has to be to the, to them.
My next question has to do with the director's report and why section 411C colocation was not evaluated or addressed. And let me preface this with, there's a typo in the land use codes. There are two section Cs in the land use code. One of those sections was addressed, but colocation was not addressed. And just to clarify this question, I'm not referring to colocation of putting your equipment on somebody else's tower, but putting your tower on other places, other towers in the vicinity. That was never addressed in the application or the director's reports.
Ben, we, excuse me, we would have to go back. I keep moving then. We'd have to go back and spend time going back through and looking at it. But I think you were here when there was testimony a few minutes ago that there are no structures. You know, this is your, your, your home. There are no structures of sufficient height. We're talking about 80 to 90 foot. In fact, that was a point that you all have made, that this is a, will create a high structure. It is so much better for wireless companies to be able to colocate. It's faster. It's cheaper. You don't have to build a new tower. And that's one of the first things, and I believe that was pointed out by Nick. They searched, there were no, the towers, remember the picture of the map showing the structures with the yellow penderel? She remember that? It was a circle he had of five-mile radius. In fact, we had to turn in a map like that to Rudy, showing the location of the closest towers. Five miles, but everything Steve has said, in fact, the last maps he showed you off of his PowerPoint, showed the area of coverage. Five miles far exceeds that, as we can go back and forth on the slides. So there are no colocatable structures in accordance with the code requirements.
Thank you. I think this might be my last question. Speaking of the codes, section 411C, this is the concealment of wireless facilities. There are four criteria: architecturally integrated, avoidance of dominant viewscapes, using of existing infrastructure, which we now know are not available, and take advantage of natural screening. My question to the applicant is, how have you satisfied this code? And I think some of the confusion has to do with, there are two section Cs of this code. It's colocation and concealment.
Ben, I'm going to have to maybe pass into Rudy, but I don't believe actual concealment is a requirement for the tower. It says concealed wireless telecommunications facilities must be. There, this site does not require a concealed tower. This is, but we went ahead to soften it, as I said, and therefore we presented a concealed tower. As opposed to, I think Kemp Hill was the last one that came in with a monopole and it was painted brown. But I don't believe that there is a code section requiring that it be a concealed tower. We took that on. And these, the section you were referring to addresses once a, once submitted, these are the, it must be architecturally integrated, located, avoid a dominant silhouette, located existing, on an existing vertical structure, located in areas where existing topography. If you don't want a concealed tower, we can agree to, like right here, modify the application and do a monopole. But we hear the neighbors. We heard and we thought this would be, like there have been approved monopines in Taos County. We thought that this would be an accommodation. But if, if the board would rather it just be a monopole, we would assume that. And we're open to any questions like that, but we believe that this is the best. Thanks. I'm pleading the case.
Well, we're not interested in the monopole either, I think. But that's also the, the tree, the disguisement of the monopole, I think, is what satisfies all of these other codes that I would argue you are attempting to break. The criteria for the concealed wireless telecommunications facility has not been met. And that's simple. That's all my questions. Thank you.
So, so now they can ask questions of Ben.
Thank you, commissioners. We have no questions. We can make some up for you. But thank you for allowing us to present.
Okay. Quick question. If we have any questions, when is it appropriate to ask? Now. Okay. Is there any questions of the commission? And who wants to go first? Okay, Commissioner Beale.
Thank you. I do have a couple of questions. I've heard loud and clear. Oh, yes.
Okay, before we. Okay. All right. I think we're at the end, seeing the end. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing and. Okay, so the public hearing is officially closed. Now I'll open it up to questions from the commission to. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, Chair. So a couple of questions. And I've heard also that there's... I'm sorry, folks think that there is a potential...
Say that again.
Yes, potential need for coverage out there, but a couple of the locations haven't been addressed. For example, maybe, you know, it has been and I just didn't quite grasp it from the map. They mentioned the landfill and they mentioned, I think, the fire department. I'm wondering, where on that map are those two locations and why, I mean, since there doesn't seem to be a problem, and the need seems to be more in the valley, why not buy the fire department or the landfill? Which I know is a little bit further out.
Can you go back to the slide you were at previously? It was like the fourth of the RF deck? Yes, thank you. Oh, Mr. Chair, commissioners, Commissioner Beale. So if you look at that map and you look at the very top section, you see a blue line that looks like the end of a box. Okay? So in that little area, there's a spot that was brought up by opposition that said, why can't we go here? So it's farther north, it's in the very north side of that blue box. So it's not going to provide service to the south, down in the town. Okay? So that's why it says the farther north we move to the users, to the south of the Royal Honda are not served. So that's why the site's so far north. There's another site brought up by opposition, it's actually not on this map, it's north of this map along the highway. And that's where, I think it was a landfill or something, where there's an application for another site at that location, that's right across the street from where opposition brought up. So we would be building a tower right next to a tower. Doesn't make a lot of sense, because there's already a tower there, it's co-locatable. Anybody needs to add antennas, would add antennas to the tower that's been approved. So that's why that other site was not taken into account when I looked at it yesterday. Now, speaking of the, you said the fire station?
Yes.
Is that correct? So the fire station is down in the valley, so once again, you look down to the south side, the farther south we move, the users in the north side along 522 are not served. So the people talking about the low basin, where there's no service, or they're getting scratchy service, the site down at the fire station would not serve them because it's on the south side. So we get into the, if we go too far north, we don't help people down here. We go too far south, we don't help up here. We go in the middle, we help everybody.
Okay. I do have a couple of other questions.
Go ahead.
So what's the diameter of this, of the structure, of the pole, the tower, excuse me, what is the diameter?
Yes. So submitted in our original application were in tab, Tower Calculations, which include the structural calc, it's section three. It had been in there, mostly calculations.
For the, for the...
Well, for the tower itself. But basically, to save you the time, the diameter of the tower itself, the steel structure at the base, it's tapered monopole. Steel itself is about four feet diameter at the base, and it tapers up, I think to like 24 inches at the top. But the branches of what you're asking about, the branch radius, typically the lower branches are 10 to 12 feet, they stagger them, so it has more of a, you know, it's staggered. So you're talking about as far as a radius goes, from 10 to 24 feet, kind of on the bottom part, and of course it tapers up. Does that answer your question?
That's, that's good. Thank you. And just a couple more. So I think there was a comment made of, this is the least intrusive way, right, to provide this service. And I guess the question is for who? Because obviously, there is others that would think different.
Commissioner, let me kind of set it up and then Nick expand. To be least intrusive, and that gets under the, what I said, the guardrails, that's guardrail number two. Denial cannot effectively prohibit. And one of the requirements for effectively prohibit is that there's a gap in service, which I believe we've provided empirical evidence, there is. Least intrusive, now the courts have said, to be least intrusive, it's what I call the ables. It's got to be buildable, leasable. Now, leasable is a key item we all tend to overlook, are you going to be able to lease a spot? Developable is the ground, does it have the geotech? And developable. So those are the requirements that fit that lead of being, from a technical stance under the FCC, the Telecom Act, to be that term, least intrusive. I understand the interpretation, oh, it's intrusive, that's on whom. But again, going back to the meat and bones of the Telecommunication Act is to facilitate deployment, following your local regulations, but also with those guardrails. So it's got to meet those requirements. Buildable, developable, leasable, and is it going to be able to have access and utilities? Fiber in this part of your community is a big issue. Can you get fiber to some of these areas within a reasonable time period? Nick, do you have anything?
I do have a question for Rudy.
Okay.
So Rudy, as I was reading this binder, going through the binder, I did notice that there was no lease agreement, maybe I missed it, what that lease agreement entails, and also I did not see a survey for that property, and I think it was pointed by one of the, I think Jeff pointed it out, which was one of the things that I caught as well, because it would have to be valued separately. So I'm just wondering, why was that not a requirement?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Beale, the documentation that the applicants did provide did show the boundaries of the property, and it did show, you know, existing easements where, you know, there's access, and also, you know, it did show the property lines, things like that. So they did give me enough technical data that I needed to evaluate the proposal, you know, as far as the requirements for setbacks from our property lines, and as far as where the existing easements were, where they were going to stay out of, and things like that. And then also, it's important to point out, somebody mentioned, while there was concerns about the Asechia, but again, the Asechia was three, is three tenths of a mile away from this property, they're not going to interfere with the flows of it, they're not going to interfere with any, you know, having to modify the Asechia, nothing like that. But that's what I looked at when I evaluated the project, is they did give me enough information showing where easements were on the property, the property boundaries, things of that nature.
And a follow-up on that is, because for assessment purposes, I know for a fact that churches are tax exempt.
Yes.
So then how would the assessment, how would the assessor even began to appraise this without a, an actual survey, a separate assessment, just something to...
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Beale, one of the things you can do as a condition of approval, should you decide to approve this application, is to have them create a survey plat for the lease area. And they can, they can evaluate it that way, they can evaluate that way based on the survey plat that they would have to create for the lease area. So that's one of the options you can have, and that would assist the assessors for tax purposes on figuring out how much to tax them on based on the area that they're leasing.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Any other questions?
Commissioner Brush.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, everyone, everyone in the room today, presenters, commenters, neighbors. I just have, I have, I think, just a couple of questions. The first one probably for Mr. Francis. I think I heard you say that section 4.11.1 subsection C about concealed wireless telecommunications doesn't apply, because the thing that stuck out to me was the requirement to avoid becoming a dominant silhouette in the landscape, which it absolutely is going to do. And that's something that you say that you don't have to comply with, because you're not required to conceal it in the first place?
I'm not following, I'm sorry, it's been a long morning.
Do you need to comply with section 4.11.1 subsection C, concealed wireless telecommunications facilities must be, I'm looking at number two, located to avoid a dominant silhouette of a wireless telecommunications facility on Escarpment and Mesa. The dominant silhouette is what I'm focused on, but I think I heard you all say, because you're not trying to do a concealed facility, you're just doing it to be good neighbors, that you don't have to comply with that?
No, ma'am, we were saying that this is the best we can do as far as a camouflage. I mean, if you don't, again, we've chosen to, as I said, soften it by using a camouflage, but we can't, there is no type of camouflaging.
Right. Then, then, and that's what I heard you say, so thank you, when you were answering a previous question, but then, then avoiding becoming a dominant silhouette is a criterion in our regulations that would never be met. At least not in this location.
Well, in a sense that if you, if you go back to 4.6.1, on the suitability, the public interest in it overrides that. So if, let's say we were doing a monopole, monopole tower, and we came in and we put it at this location, and we did our argument over 4.6.1 with all the testimony you heard, we're not going to be able to overcome, we wouldn't have to address that, it would definitely be a factor you take into consideration.
And then, yeah, and I'm not sure, this might be a question to discuss with legal at some point, if 4.6 dot 1A and/or B overrides 4.11.1, I don't, I'm not sure, but my other question has to go with, and I think Commissioner Beale mentioned too, that we've heard a lot about where there's coverage, where there's not coverage. I mean, that's our experience all over Taos County, right? Like, what provider do you have? Like, I have two different providers, I get to like test them both all over. You know, are you on a hill? Is it cloudy? Like, are there other people around in, I don't know, a mass gathering, and there's too many people on the network? So I don't think that, well, looking at all the maps and hearing all the anecdotes, like, there are too many variables that we're going to hear from each other, like, you know, I've got fiber to the house and not my neighbor's house, whatever. But I just wanted to point out something, just in the spirit of fairness, the disclaimers that Mr. Thomas also mentioned, like, I guess because in a previous life I used to write them, like, I appreciate it, Mr. Kennedy brought them up, but you offered no disclaimer for the mapping from the cellmapper.net, which is an app that you have to download, you have to be really interested in doing that and motivated to report a concern or a complaint. I would just offer up that that map too deserved a disclaimer, because I'm not sure many, how many of us driving around through Honda or anywhere else have the cellmapper.net app. So that one deserved almost, I think, a bigger disclaimer than the other apps. It's more of a comment than a question. But yeah, I think I'll let other folks go now for a minute.
Commissioner Beale.
I know this is not a requirement, but I'm just curious, did anyone think of doing a survey, going door-to-door, talking to the community, and really, really finding out who is having difficulty, you know, what the issues are?
As far as going door-to-door and documenting, as far as an RF engineering standpoint, we looked at the network data. The Verizon engineer that designed the site looked at what the equipment was reporting back for failure rates, problem areas, issues, complaints within the Verizon system, where customers call in. That's how this search ring was generated, this site was required.
Thank you.
Vice Chair O'Meadle.
Question?
No questions.
No question. Just quick, did I hear correctly that on these cell towers that you guys choose to build, there's two utilities that are required for these cell towers to work correctly, which is power and fiber?
There are two requirements. There's a standard power connection, which is typically what you get for 100, for home service, 200 amp, 122 40 volt. The other requirement is a connection back to the switched network, all the way back to the switching center. That's either a fiber connection or microwave backhaul connection, where there's two point-to-point dishes that are, that are pointing at each other from this site and the other corresponding site. So those are the two utilities required, there are no other utilities required on these sites.
So those are definitely factors that are taken into consideration when determining where to locate these towers.
Oh, yes, sir. Significant.
Okay. So no other questions? There's been a motion by Vice Chair O'Meadle?
There are some questions we have of the attorney in regards to the rules, so I would offer a, if we could do a friendly motion to go into executive session.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your motion, Commissioner Mariposa, excuse me. What was your motion? To deny the view? Okay, then there's no friendly amendment to that. That's it, that's just a straightforward motion.
Can he withdraw his?
Then you could have your motion.
So is there a second to that motion?
It dies for lack of...
Okay, see none, then it dies. So now you can make a motion to go into executive.
Motion to go into executive session.
To be clear, the motion is to go into executive session for deliberations with regarding to this request. And we didn't list it on our agenda, but I think it's appropriate if you've set it on the record, and then we can do that, if you have a second and a vote.
Okay, then I will clarify that, I will make a motion to go into executive session for deliberation. That special?
There's been a motion by Commissioner Beale, second by Commissioner Brush. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Yes.
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 Maybe people could get lunch, I don't know, whatever the commissioner wants.
Well, we can, but I don't know how long, I mean...
Or not, I mean, people could just wait here till you're done, come back.
It's going to take a long time? Okay, we'll, we'll be back. Okay, we'll, we'll be back.
Rosa, let me know when you're ready. Ready? Ready, Valerie? Okay, do we have a motion to come back into? I'll go ahead and second that. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Commissioner Vahill?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chair Mascaranias?
Yes. And then I'll go ahead and turn it over to our attorney for report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Only those matters that were mentioned in the motion to go into closed session were discussed during closed session, and no final decision was made.
Mr. Chair, I make the motion to deny the appeal for special use permit 24-00013.
I get that.
There's been a motion by Vice Chair Romero, second by Commissioner Romero. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Commissioner Vahill? Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
No.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chair Mascaranias?
Yes.
To be clear, that means that the appeal has been denied and the decision of the planning commission has been affirmed. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. Okay, moving right along to item number 10, Resolutions and ordinances. 10A, Discussion, Consideration, Decision Regarding the Approval of Resolution Number 2025-46, A Resolution for Participation in Transportation Project Fund Program Administered by the New Mexico DOT LP 50070 for Caihuan Road. Deborah Chavez, are you here?
Ms. Chavez went to get some lunch, so I know they're on their way back. So with this resolution, this is one of the transportation project fund grants that I mentioned, along with Tom Holder Road, the next resolution. So we did receive the grant agreement, so this is part of the process of accepting. The grant is to approve this resolution, along with the next one and the next item. May I stand for any questions?
Any questions? Seeing none, do we have?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, motion to approve Resolution Number 2025-46 on Caihuan Road.
Been a motion by Commissioner Omero. I'll go ahead and second that one. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Commissioner Vahill?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Moving along to 10B, Discussion, Consideration, Decision Regarding the Approval of Resolution 2025-47, A Resolution for Participation in Transportation Project Fund Administered by NMDOT LP 50071 for Tom Holder Road. Welcome, Deborah.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. I present to you Resolution 2025-47. This is an agreement between Taos County and the New Mexico Department of Transportation for the Transportation Road Fund. This is for Tom Holder Road, for the design for construction of mail and pave, widening of the roadway from two eight-foot driving lanes to proposed 11-foot driving lanes realignment, need for replacement of a single lane bridge to a double lane bridge.
Mr. Chairman, one question. After the agreement is finalized, how long does it take before the funding is actually available?
It usually takes them about one to two months to get it to us.
One to two months still.
They've been pretty quick about getting them out. So the last ones we submitted, they got it within two weeks, so.
Two months or less?
Yes.
Any other questions?
I do have a question for staff. So do we have plans for this funding? What is it going to go for? The Tom Holder? I'm sorry, the, yeah, Tom Holder.
Holder.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Vahill, this is one of the ones, if you recall, that me and Mr. Silva have made a presentation on before. And then I think one retreat or works today session, we also had the engineer come down. Because like Ms. Chavez said, this is a total road realignment to intersect with, what's intersection? Camino de Medio. And so, and then we're also acquiring two parcels of land with this as well. And because it's in a riparian veget area, we also area, we also have to do a NEPA study and that's going to be the length of the time is on the on the environmental study and so this money will help get us, get that study going.
Thank you, and I do recall it's just good for the folks to know what we're approving, so thank you.
Mr. Chair, motion to approve Resolution Twenty Twenty-five dash forty-seven?
It's been a motion by Commissioner Romero, second by Vice Chair Romero. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Commissioner Vahill?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chair Mascheranes?
Yes, thank you Deborah, appreciate it. Moving right along to item eleven, Contracts, Agreements, MOUs and Bids. Item eleven A, Discussion, Consideration, Decision Regarding the Approval of a Multi-Award of ITB Twenty Twenty-six dash zero two for the Road and Construction Materials for Taos County Public Works. Ms. Elsa Vahill, welcome.
Good morning, Chair Mascheranes Commission. Before is a staff recommendation for ITB Twenty Twenty-six dash O two. The Taos County Purchasing Department received five responses to our published ITB Twenty Twenty-six dash two for the road construction, the road and construction materials prior to the deadline of two P M. Mountain Standard Time, Thursday, August twenty, twenty twenty-five. This was the first advertisement for this ITV and this solicitation. Two of the five responses were disqualified due to the minimum response requirements were not met and they were notified. The offers who responded or who were have good responses were GM Pipe LLC, LJ Pacheco Trucking and Gravel Products LLC and Perovich Properties Inc., DBA Taos Gravel Products. Based on the lowest price within the geographical area, staff recommended a multi-source award for ITV Twenty Twenty-six dash two Road and Construction Materials to GM Pipe LLC, LJ Pacheco Trucking and Gravel Products LLC and Perovich Properties Corporation DBA Taos Gravel Products respectfully. So just to let you know, these contracts, there'll be separate contracts. Some, just depending on dollar amounts, may be brought forward to the commission for approval, but these contracts will be used as as needed basis for those materials. In terms of LJ Pacheco Trucking and Gravel, they are from Mora, so they're closer to the Pinasco area and vice versa, Taos gravel is like centralized for Taos, for all the Taos as well as the Cuesta area. And GM Pipe LLC is a, is a new company out there. Kind of like a sister to GM Emulsions and their pit is out of Espanola. And if you look at the actual tabulations that came in, the only, the only portion that got no bids on was the actual wash aggregate, the three eighths inch right now. So out of all the, the materials that we asked for, for public works, that was the only one, number five, that did not get any bids in the door. So again, I stand for any other questions that you may have.
Yes, Elsa, just out of curiosity, are these prices close to what we paid in prior years or last year at least?
Yes and no. I, I would say if we pick it up by county staff, it's pretty comparable with the base course or even the green sand and crusher fines and natural fines, but in terms of the asphalt, the different types, the SP four and the SP three, tho- those did go up slightly only because oil is going up as well and gas, so those prices did go up. But they're, they're very comparable, I think. Even with state price agreement, they're pretty comparable. If, if we were allowed to use the state price agreement, say that the state uses, they're pretty comparable. Usually the state will have things delivered to them. If our staff is available and our equipment's available, we will pick up the items that we need at the time to place on those roadways, on the county maintained roadways. So there's various ways we can get it. We can either have them deliver it or we can pick it up ourselves. Either from the pit or the location that they, they designate for this material.
Thank you.
Questions? None, what are your wishes?
I will make a motion to approve the multi-award of ITB Twenty Twenty-six dash O two for the Road and Construction Materials for Taos County Public Works Department.
Second.
There's been a motion by Commissioner Vahill, a second by Commissioner Brush. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Commissioner Vahill?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chair Mascheranes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you Elsa. Moving right along to eleven B, Ratification of Contract TCC Twenty Twenty-five dash Twenty-eight A one, Wood Sharks to Thin Additional Twelve Point Five Acres of El Valle Escondido NFL Grant for a total of twenty-nine point six acres at a cost increase of thirty-five thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven fifty cents.
Thank you Chair Mascheranes, Commissioners. Staff recommends approval of this contract with Wood Sharks. This is amendment number one. Like the chair said, it's an increase of thirty-five thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents. NFL does not stand for National Football League. It stands for Non-Federal Lands Grant.
Bomber.
A lot, yeah, a little bit of football humor as we're in, going into week three.
I would like to move approval of Contract TCC Twenty Twenty-five Twenty-eight Amendment One with Wood Sharks.
Second.
Questions, go ahead.
The increase is for what again? The services or for?
To do an additional twelve, twelve points of the acres to product, to thin approximately twenty-nine point six.
Sorry, I missed that.
Yeah, so it's in a, we're adding additional acres to this contract and additional compensation. And it's a non-federal lens grant, grant.
Thank you, I appreciate that. My apologies, that binder really took a lot of time yesterday. I really tried to get to all of it.
There's been a motion by Commissioner Brush, second by Commissioner Romero. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Commissioner Vahill?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chair Mascheranes?
Yes. Eleven C, Discussion, Consideration and Decision Regarding the Approval of Contract TCC Twenty Twenty-five dash forty, GM Emulsions. The contractor will provide all labor and materials to pave the parking lot for Rolling Still Distillery Warehouse located at thirteen oh one Paseo del Pueblo, El Prado, New Mexico.
So, Mr. Chair, both me and Ms. Vahill will respond. I just want to go back a little bit. Ms. Stern came to the commission months ago with a LIDA update for, LIDA is Local Economic Development Act. Rolling Still was able to go find funding and as a mechanism, you could use the Local Economic Development Act for, as a way around anti-donation to help a business that's going to provide jobs to the community. So Rolling Still is going to, I think, create approximately twenty new jobs. And you can see some of the construction going on, those of you that drive that area of New Mexico sixty-eight. So this, I'll turn over the contract portion to Ms. Vahill.
So this is the portion that Rolling Still in, together with another group, where they are out of their own pocket, they already ran and excavated and took out all the concrete or whatever was in that park, that existing parking lot. And at this time, we contacted GM Emulsions, who's under state price agreement and obviously in Taos to help keep costs down with mobilization everything for this organization, worked with us and gave us a quote in, in the amount of a hundred and seventeen thousand seven hundred and fifty-two dollars before tax to pave that entire parking lot. And we also insured with New Mexico DOT with the way it ties into, you know, New Mexico sixty-eight there to make sure that any of the engineering that was done for that parking lot, the slope was correct and that DOT wasn't going to have any problems with the way the drainage was going down there. They did have to change a little bit of the slope on the existing parking lot only because of what they had to pull out of the old materials. So right now it's already prepped and ready to go, so at this time we're just asking approval for this contract to move forward based on the amount on our procurement and policy that we have in place.
Chair, I just wanted to make a statement, a comment, excuse me. Thank you for breaking that down and reminding us of, of how this all began and this really helps. And with that, I will make a motion to approve.
Second.
Been a motion by Commissioner Vahill, second by Commissioner Brush. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chair Mascheranes?
Yes, thank you. Moving along, eleven D, Ratification for Contract TCC Twenty Twenty-four dash fifty-four R and M Construction. Additional renovations at the Taos County Detox Center is described in greater detail in Exhibit one A. Mr. Richard Sanchez or Chris, welcome.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is a ratification of a contract. Basically, what occurred is we moved to get into that space and when we designed it, we started to work on it and then start working on phase two. And we realized there were aspects of phase two that were going to disrupt phase one and we bet, it would be best to take care of some of these items beforehand. So there were two items in particular. One was the kitchen, which resides in the building that is now phase one, so it was best to take care of that immediately. So part of this, these funds will go to that kitchen. The second aspect is introducing a triage, which we were looking to introduce in phase two. I'm hopeful we can bring it into phase one, but what triage is, is you have detox and we all have a sense of what that is. It's folks that need to go and get that particular service. Triage is when somebody is in need out there. We don't know exactly where they need to go. And this is going to be the location where they do go to get that initial intake to find out where do they need. And, and it could be detox, it could be someplace else. The benefit of this, one, is it's just an important facet of the continuum of care. But two, it provides relief from our detention centers, our law enforcement and our emergency rooms. Because now if you don't have a triage, then they're going to go to one of those places instead. And part of the triage intake, the bathroom is in the existing building and so we're taking care of that right away. So this is sort of moving funds from phase two and taking care of this now.
Thank you for that explanation. Commissioner Brush?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Madrid. So I think you just answered my question with the last thing you said. This is, this is being, the funds are coming from our congressionally designated spending award.
Correct.
Thank you. Thanks for keeping this moving.
Anyone else?
I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
A motion to approve Contract Number TCC Twenty Twenty-four dash fifty-four.
I'll second.
There's been a motion by Commissioner Vahill, second by Commissioner Brush. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chair Mascheranes?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Eleven E, Discussion, Consideration, Decision Regarding the Approval of an Award of ITB Twenty Twenty-six dash one for Yanocamado Community Center Parking Lot Improvements, Phase One. Elsa.
Back again, Chairman, Commission. Before you, as a staff recommendation, the Taos County Purchasing Department received one response to our published ITV Twenty Twenty-six dash one for Yanocamado Community Center Parking Lot Improvements, Phase One, prior to the deadline of two P M. Mountain Standard Time, Wednesday, September tenth, twenty twenty-five. This was the first advertisement of this ITV and solicitation. The offer who responded was Northern Paving. Based on the lowest price for the base bid, staff recommends to award ITV Twenty Twenty-six dash one for the Yanocamado Community Center Parking Lot Improvements, Phase One to Northern Paving respectfully. And as you can see, there is a breakdown of cost that was provided. And the total amount that was, once we want to award her, they're recommending is a hundred and thirty-eight thousand six sixty-six eighteen and that is prior to New Mexico GRT. And I stand for any questions.
Commissioner Vahill, go ahead.
What's the timeline on this? Do you know?
It'll be fairly quickly. We hope, time is of the essence. Obviously, the weather's changing fairly quickly. We're hoping that we could get this done way before the end of October. It's just how fast we can move on the contract and then get the notice of award and notice proceed to the contractor to move forward. Due to, there is some trenching work that needs to be done in order for some of the drainage that needs to be done on phase one before the paving happy, happens at that point. But he didn't foresee any problems in getting that done before the end of October, maybe the latest early November due to, you know, based on weather conditions, of course.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? No, seeing none?
Motion to approve?
Second.
By Commissioner Vahill, second by Commissioner Romero. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chair Mascheranes?
Yes, thank you Elsa, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Moving right along to, let's see, did I miss anything? Twelve. Consent Agenda, A, B, C and D? Was there an E?
Yeah.
Did I miss one? I did, sorry. Let's move back. There's an F, right? Okay. Eleven F, Discussion, Consideration, Decision Granting Authority to the County Manager to Sign the Final Contract to Northern Paving for the Yanocamado Community Center Parking Lot Improvements. Okay, back to you.
Okay, Chairman Commission, of course, time is of the essence and weather is catching up to us. We are asking to grant authority to the county manager to sign the final contract to Northern Paving to move this project on faster, so I don't have to wait till the mean in October to get the contract approved. So I stand again for any questions.
Motion to approve.
Been a motion by Commissioner Romero, second by Vice Chair Romero. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Commissioner Vahill?
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Chair Mascheranes?
Yes, thank you.
Now we can move to twelve. Our consent agenda, A, B, C and D. What are your wishes? Been a motion by Vice Chair Romero, I'll go ahead and second that. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Commissioner Vahill?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Moving right along to item thirteen, County Managers Reports and Matters Update to County Commission, Mr. Jaramillo.
Thank you, Chair Mascheranes. I'll be brief. Want to start off of our cultural treasures project. Ms. Stern had placed a booth at the Paseo over the weekend, both Friday and Saturday. Again, it's just trying to get the survey filled out, so she'd also had a little giveaway. Commissioner Brush was demonstrating that earlier, his skills. And so we also gave away some chudos, but if you haven't done so, please get in, in the the survey and this is something to inform the group is what type of landmarks, what do we want to preserve as a community? So I think it's very important to do that. We talked a lot about protecting our, the different areas of the county that we love, and this is one way also to get that documented. So I encourage everybody to do that. Mr. Lucero is still working on the emergency action plan. They're continuing to have the group meetings, so that is happening. He is working with the different groups throughout the county on that, the stakeholder group, so he is working on that. I guess we'll see a first phase fairly soon. Ms. Ralston Elliott is continuing to work on the audit. All her items have been turned in. The treasurer's office has turned in their items. We're still lacking a few different things, so the auditors may push back the, when they come up to CS, it's, Numbly was telling me yesterday afternoon, so I'll let the commission know when the auditors will be on hand. A piece of good news, we did receive a rate pass for our healthcare insurance. So this has happened two years in a row is that our health insurance is not going up. And that's been very rare that that's happened. So two years in a row, our large claims have really come down, so they're, the insurance company is attributing the rate pass due to the large claims coming down as well, so that's good for us. We are looking to maybe schedule some time with the planning department for a retreat with our land use consultant, Steve. I just saw his name. So we're looking, Bernstein, Steve Bernstein, so we're looking to set something up with the commission on that. So we'll let you know when that's going to happen. We're still working on New Mexico five fifty, that should be wrapping up in the next few weeks there in Royoseco, as you go down the hill to go up to the ski valley and then off of Leo, Lencia Road. as you go down the hill to, uh, go up to the ski valley and then off of Leo Valencia Road. Uh, so we have, uh, another few weeks, uh, there of doing that, uh, uh, project as well. Our sheriff's office, uh, we've demoed inside the building and we're ready to start working on the interior. We've demoed the both parking lots already and, uh, so that work is progressing. We'll probably come before you at the next meeting because we have to approve because of the dollar amount, the purchase of the furniture that's going to go into the sheriff's office. So, that'll be coming, uh, we're slightly ahead of schedule in our plaza renovations. And so, that is going well, we might bring to the commission a couple of amendments. We are looking to add, uh, shade that's removable, so I was looking at this yesterday, we don't have a cost yet but to, you know, temporary put, uh, those try, uh, bu- uh, not banners, but, uh, the canopies. And so, uh, uh, we'll probably come before the commission of an amendment, uh, to that contract as well. Uh, we're gonna, the contractor G M Emulsions is going to do, repave the parking lots, uh, beginning next week, so we need to start getting the word out. And so, they, uh, Gilbert did let me know yesterday afternoon that, uh, that work will commence next week. And, uh, the work has already commenced on building the first phase of the trail, uh, right here off the Rio Fernando and the property we bought. Uh, so, that first phase is, um, is commenced as well. Uh, as you saw from the video that Richard, uh, forded you, the concrete has been poured and, um, and, uh, and pinyasco, so we'll be ready to start raising the building and the building's on site. The one where the governor gave us that grant money to build a building for a local nonprofit, so right in front of the community center.
They already started erecting it, so.
Okay, that's good.
Um, my question, go ahead, I'll ask my question.
So, yeah, there's a video from Richard Sanchez in there, if you want to see the concrete getting poured and stuff. And, uh, I stand for any questions?
Commissioner Vehil.
Three, I haven't had lunch, so I'm a little slightly, um, without energy here, um, you talked about a trail, you're talking about the trail here.
Right, in front of the.
Right.
And.
Which is on our pro- the property that we just acquired. I'm, I'm just wondering, like, how did the decisions be, how did they get made as to how that trail would look? And I'm just curious, you know, like.
So.
Who made those decisions?
So, is, uh, we received a grant from the Trails Plus, probably two years ago, we were asked to apply by the state of New Mexico. Uh, Representative Ortiz asked us to apply for that grant. And when we were always talking about the housing, uh, that there would be a walking trail, uh, around the housing development. That way, if employees wanted to go walk on their lunch break or on their break, they could get some exercise and get out of the building. And so, Jessica, knowing that we were going to already incorporate that into the design of the housing, put it into there. So, she's been meeting with the Rio Fernando Collaborative probably for over a year now.
Right, and, and I do recall that, so, so let me just say this, I, I think it's a great idea, great, I was just wondering, since we've yet to decide what that is going to look like out there, I was wondering who decided, you know, the trail. So, you just answered that, that was the Rio Fernando decided.
Right, she's.
Along with Jessica.
And then, we hired, uh, Living Design Group to do the, to do the design of, of the trail, too, since they're already working on that.
So, you have that with you, so we can see it, or we just?
Yeah, I can afford it to you.
Oh, what we're gonna see there.
I, it, it went too quick to the newspaper last week.
When they, when they gave us the living design stuff, uh, the, what it could potentially look like over there, it had the trail.
Right.
Designed somewhat in there, so I'm assuming it's going to be similar to that. So, we all got a, a whole pamphlet full of this.
I do recall that, but what I also recall is that there were some things that were brought up that, that we hadn't considered. So, you know, I, I was just wondering who made the decisions because, once again, we talked about, well, no one considered certain things like parking, you know? Um, and so, wondering what that, what the outcome was, does that make sense?
So, right, right, as you know, the Rio Fernando Collaborative is doing a bigger trail system. So, they're doing from up in the canyon, all the way to Fred Boca Park, I don't know if it goes beyond that. And so, this kind of loops in to it, so it was just coincidence that us wanting to build a walking trail for the employees for exercise actually helps out the Rio Fernando, they're gonna come back around, go through our parking lot because they can't, uh, we don't have easement through the, the next property owner, so they're gonna, anybody walking that trail will cut through the parking lot and then go down to the thing. I, I'll have to ask, um, Mr. Fry or somebody for that longer thing, but I do have something that I can send the commission on, on, uh, this little portion here, so it's just the first portion of this.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Commissioner Romero.
Nah, so, Haddamio, any updates on the veteran cemetery?
Um, it still hasn't gone bef- before Board of Finance, the state needs to do their application packet. Ours, uh, portion of the packet has already been turned in, I would like to, I know he's not in the room, but I would also like to thank Mr. Madrid for, uh, for working on that packet. And, uh, Mr. Trujillo also did weigh in, but, uh, uh, Mr. Madrid really carried the load on that and got the packet in on time for us and he probably did a portion of the state's work is, is well. I think the state is just waiting on for a couple of components before they can submit their packet to the Board of Finance.
Any indication, question on how soon burials can begin?
Um, I know they're starting to advertise for employees and they won't start any burials until at least they hire, uh, there's, uh, five to six employees that they want to, uh, that they need to have on staff.
Because they have some support from Angel Fire also, right?
Right, so right now, for example, Angel Fire's coming up to cut the grass and maintain the, the property.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Vice Chair Romero.
Uh, Mr. Haddamio, real quick, uh, Jason's in here with you, the bridge up in Red River, I'm s- All right, going on two and a little more years of them hassling me, right, how far are we up?
Well, like I was mentioning this morning, uh, we did have a design that we wanted to buy a prefab, uh, basically a covert and, uh, but then it wasn't waited for the fire trucks and we'll let Jason.
Hello. Chair Mascherini, uh, Commissioner Romero, yeah, unfortunately, that's, we hit a little bit of a snag. The, the structural ratings on that contact bridge that we were wanting to place in there only meets about a ten ton limit. Uh, I don't want to invest money into something that, when we need them for fire services, are going to be, uh, they won't be able to cross it. So, what's happened since then is we're redesigning the bridge to su- support that load rating, which Mike, uh, mentioned that it's not, most of them are going to be somewhere around a forty-ton capacity with a tanker fully loaded and that's what we need. So, at this point, we've kind of shifting gears, that, the, the open, the, I, I shared with you at one point what it looked like. It is unfortunately, that does not meet the specifications that we need, so we're going to be shorting it up with concrete and adding some, um, some structural elements to it that could support it. So, we're still going to utilize the base of it, but there's another component of an abutment and, uh, concrete cap that's going to be there. So, that one will be going out to R F P within the month.
All right.
Yes.
Another question.
Vice Chair Romero, go ahead.
Brent, and I did talk to you earlier, uh, Sheriff Mera did contact me to have H R contact him and they'll start doing driver's license checks or they'll monitor expirations or if they have a license or not, that they, he can take that up.
Okay, yeah, I'll talk to the H R department about it, yeah.
All right.
Just, for clarification on that, there's, um, I'll give you an example, I have a commercial driver's license, right? But the only way I can keep my commercial driver's license is I comply with state law, meaning that every year I have to get my physical.
Just for our employees.
Yeah, if I fail to get my physical, even though my physical license says commercial driver's license, I don't get it within the required time, they pull that portion of my license, so that's what it's about, yeah.
And it's a.
Be out there, like, stop people.
Yeah, so it's.
That's what it sounds like to me.
It's specific to employees or new employment.
Company that we use, uh, to, you know, I, there was a delay. The company that we use to do the driver license check.
Um, anything else, Mr. Haddamio?
No, Chair.
Okay, moving right along to fourteen, commissioners' reports, uh, reported matters, new business to be considered at fu- future commission meetings, anything? Seeing none, moving on to B, any announcements from any of the commissioners? Commissioner Romero.
Mr. Chairman, yes, I attended a, uh, a meeting on, uh, September eleventh that was initiated by the New Mexico Department of Justice, which we used to know as, uh, a State Attorney General's Office. And, uh, the purpose of the meeting was to, um, address, um, a memorial that was passed by the state legislature in twenty eighteen that, that requested a study regarding, uh, concerns of taxation on the certain land grant and also because the Land Grant Association, uh, has concerns about encroachment on the certain land grant. So, the upshot of the meeting that was attended by a number of different participants, including, uh, Property Tax Division State of New Mexico, the Land Grant Council, uh, New Mexico Land Grant Council, the, uh, Land Grant Association and the county planner, planning department and assessor's office and commission, uh, commissioners, uh, Commissioner Vehil was going to attend, she was not able to due to, uh, 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 emergency situation and I, I was in attendance and so, um, the, uh, it was kind of a brainstorming session, talking about all the different issues on the certain land grant. But, uh, the group will continue to meet probably on a monthly basis and at some point in time, they may have some recommendations regarding the tax issues on the certain land grant and the concerns of the Land Grant Association.
Thank you, Commissioner Romero, anyone else? Uh, I just have a couple of things, um, if you hadn't read the story in the Taos News, we have a new executive director for the Blue Bus in Espanola. Uh, please take the time to, if you run into him to meet him, he's a very sharp individual. Um, the other thing is I am attending the New Mexico Counties Meeting on October third in Santa Rosa, so if anybody in the county, any of the elected officials, needs anything to be brought up or discussed, please let me know. That's it, and now we move right along to add a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn at two oh six P M.
Been a motion by Commissioner Brush, second by Commissioner Vehil, Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Commissioner Vehil. Commissioner Vehil. Yeah. Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Brush. Vice Chair Romero.
Yes.
Yes, thank you, guys.